Four employees. Planning is already privatized and what we have left essentially is a director, Rensavadat, and a secretary. A consultant comes in to half-days a week. If someone needs the services of that consultant who's in Tuesday and Thursday mornings, if someone comes in on Monday, we say please come back tomorrow and they're helped that day. Human Resources would be privatized and have a reduction from five full-time people down to two full-time people. The assessing department, part of that would be regionalized, going to the Oakland County Equalization Department, from nine people down to four people. And so what we have, and again excludes police, fire, library, museum, nature center, and public works, we're going, from what I just mentioned, 314 people down to 145, a combination of full and part-time. Hopefully this explains why we had to go to the police and fire departments after we did this exercise, because we were still short in trying to match our reduced revenue line. There was also another option that we spoke about, and we called it Option Two, and that would be to bring back the community center and have a library and nature center opened part-time. But again, because of the dire financial straits that we're in, and it's no fault of the city of Troy, whether it's the city council, or the administration, or partnership thereof, it's the circumstance that we are caught up with everyone else. We just have to deal with it, and we're one of the first ones in the area that are dealing with it. I think it's unfortunate, there'll be some cities that give this presentation probably in February or March, and they'll be, have a very compressed timeframe to make an analysis and decide what to do. But, back to Troy, if we were to have a full-time community center, a part-time library, and a part-time nature center, we'd have to increase the number of personnel in the police department, have that number reduced to 67 personnel from 45. And then this option, this matrix, again, just indicates what the savings would be in the number of reductions by having Option Two in place on a four-year basis. Nope, I'm back up, because that's Tony. Any questions?
Councilman Howard, Mayor Protem Howardak.
It's, um, I would say, my question would be, the revenue projection, as I recall, and we've all been clear about it, you and Mr. Dadow and Mr. Lamorato, that the further out we get, the less certain it becomes, and that makes sense. So, there's certainly a possibility that once we get on the other side of two years, that we've been overly pessimistic. And then, of course, I would presume that, as a city manager, you wouldn't intend perhaps to make as many service cuts as you have outlined here, particularly with the police department.
The first two years, well, the first three years, if you look at the current year WIM, we're down about 1.6 million there. Down about 6.2 million in 10, 11, and another 6 million in 11, 12. So that's 6, 12, 13, it's almost $14 million we're down over the next three fiscal years, including this one, and we think will be, what do you think, Nino? How accurate? Talking to myself, John? This year or the next two years, our degree of accuracy is?
We're confident of those numbers.
If you don't mind, don't we?
He's coming. Give us that again for nine and 10, that'll give him time to get up for Mike.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. As was reiterated by Mr. Lamorato, we're very confident of the first two years. And again, there is some guesswork involved in years three through five, you know, and that's exclusive of what we're actually facing this current year. However, if the trending is true that the gentleman from Court Partners spoke about, we could very well be conservative in years three through five. But again, every year, we would adjust these numbers, but we're, I'm very, very confident in years one and two. Including this year, right, John?
Well, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I never thought I'd see the day where we would be projecting going from 314 employees to 145. In other words, really, just as Chief Mayor said last week, he never thought he'd see the day about the dismantling of the police department. I never thought I'd see the day of the dismantling of the city of Troy. I do realize that we're in a severe situation. I do realize that other cities, who haven't stepped up to the plate yet to explain their situations, will be making severe cuts too. My question is, with this decrease in the numbers, what kind of service will we be able to provide?
Last week, we indicated what would be cut in terms of services from the departments that were eliminated. I can go to, it's a long way back, but I'll go to the departments that we have slated to privatize and try to get a sense, without going through an actual development of bid specifications, what would be lost in the privatization. Because privatization is not be-all, end-all to providing a level of service. There comes a point where it's actually more cost-effective to have full-time employees perform the function, if you want a certain level of service. We had proven that in 2005 with the operation of the Sanctuary Lake Golf Course, where we actually went out to bid for the operation and maintenance, and it was cheaper to do it than house. And again, it all depends on the level of service that you want. We could bid a building department being available for inspections five days a week, we could bid a building department being available for inspections three days a week. If it's three days a week, our full-time employees cannot be market-competitive with that reduced level of service. So, again, it's going to depend on what the governing body wants for a level of service for each of these departments. We are projecting that we could save roughly 40% through privatization, and we'll begin that immediately to work on that. But, we believe that it's not going to be enough. It's not going to save anyone's job, in the building department, the engineering department, the public works department, parks, rock and human resources, and real estate development. As well as the departments being eliminated, their jobs are not going to be saved, regardless of what you do. Now, having said that, there will be a hybrid on the privatizations, but you saw the small degree that we were going to save. All I'm saying is that, when we went through each department and decided what cuts had to be made, given the revenue stream, and what could be privatized, when we were finished, we still were very short. And so, we implemented a five-year schedule that, again, we can certainly take a look at it like the Department of Defense calibrates their budget every four months. We could take a look every four months and see where we are and see what we need to do, but we're confident that for the balance of this fiscal year, which is eight months, and the 12 months after that, which is 20 months, and the 12 months after that, which is 32 months, we're probably within 1% accurate on our revenue line.
Are there other questions from council? Councilwoman Beltrami?
I must have missed it last week, I don't remember seeing the privatization of Parks and Rec. And I would have asked this question if I had seen it. What do you envision that to be?
What we would do is develop, and this is the area where frankly, I'm the weakest. I've spoken to consultants about the building department, the planning department, the engineering department, but not about Parks and Rec. But staff worked on this for me, and John and Carol can supplement what I say, but it's my understanding that it's essentially the entire parks function for parks maintenance, and a lot of the functions that are with recreation, including the community center.
What does that mean, John? Does that mean somebody comes in to manage it? Does that mean we have a separate authority? What does that mean? I can figure out what you just said, but what does it mean? How is it going to happen?
Okay, for the Parks Department, that would most likely be a specification done in tandem with the streets and drains component of Public Works. And it would be a request to go out to bid, to perform, you know, in addition to the guard rail maintenance, and the street sweeping, and some minor, you know, patching and road repair work, it would be all of the parks maintenance that's currently done, performed by the Parks Department. For recreation, I think that would be possibly having an outside firm manage some of our programming, and even the management of the community center. John, is that correct? And again, once we get, once we get the numbers in, but it'll be, I think it'll be well past December or January by the time that happens, but once we do that, we still want to give our employees the first opportunity to be competitive with that. And it behooves us as an organization, even though it's in none of our models, to work on consolidation efforts with other cities. The reason it's not in our model is because I can't force one of my colleague city managers to ink a deal by a certain date. But we can award a bid to privatize by a certain date.
Councilman Eisenbacher?
On that same slide, the privatization of Parks and Recreation, I have a very high level of concern that we'd be talking about laying off police and fire, but still maintaining 104 employees for Parks and Recreation. I mean, just laying it out quite simply, I mean, I know it's an important quality of life service for our residents, but having a police officer is a much higher need level.
I'll ask John or Carol to respond to that.
Well, our slide showed, Carol, if you want to expand on what 104 is eight in full-time and 96 part-time. So, Carol, if you want to get into what kind of program and so forth is left, not much.
Those part-time people are not permanent part-time. They're considered, what I would consider term or seasonal people, meaning they might teach a fitness course, or, that's probably not a very good example, because we'd probably contract all of those, but a senior exercise class or something like that, the eight full-time is from the 32 that we are currently at, there would be a reduction in services and an elimination of some programs and classes as well.
Carol, have me, not to put you on the spot, but I will. What do you think the average annual wages of those 96 part-timers, one person?
I would say less than $5,000.
Okay. So it's primarily to provide a service, and it's not someone that's making a lot of money times 96?
I can see it if these are people that are, like, project-specific, like you said, for teaching a class, basically we're contracting them, they teach the class, they provide the service, their costs are covered by the people who sign up for the class.
Correct.
The city's contribution is basically the facility. How do we get to 96 without having all the maintenance of the parks, with all the classes being, I mean, I understand that they're, if they're $5,000 each, we're still talking $50,000 for the group. I'm sorry. Yeah, half million, yeah, half million dollars, yeah, I was off with three zeros in my number. I mean, that's still several police officers, if these are not self-supporting positions.
There are some activities and functions that cannot be contracted, athletic field maintenance, there just isn't anybody who does that. Certainly mowing can be done. There are, of that 96, I'm going to guess without looking deeper at that, but probably 85 of those are revenue, covered by revenues, direct revenue. That's a little bit of a guess, but, yeah.
I think too, again, it's a matter of what the city council, what the governing body wants. If you don't want any parks, then there's no cost to maintain them, or there's a nominal cost to maintain them.
Mayor?
Rep. Tim Howardak.
I think the thing that might explain the situation is, in that model there, what is the, what is the amount of money that is basically being charged to the general fund, meaning it's not covered by fees, or some other grant, whatever the case might be? What is the actual cost to the city to continue with that?
All right. I think there's two answers, and Carol will correct me, or John, if I'm wrong. One answer with the community center, per se, is that the subsidy there is about $300,000 or $400,000 a year. We allocate about $1 million a year to subsidize the community center. They never use it because it's program-driven, and a lot of the fees are accounted for by the user. I'm at the library, that's almost $4 million a year for a subsidy. So, if you look at the community center, to keep that open, it's about $300,000. Parks maintenance and other recreation outside of the community center, part of that is paid for by the user groups. I think all the park maintenance is paid for by the general fund tax base at large. And we can certainly secure those numbers, can't we, John?
Yeah. I guess I was just, I think that the point that Councilman Eisenbacher was making, or at least what I heard, was, you know, if you're running the Parks and Recreation Department at that level of service, and you made it go away, what would you have additional money to spend, fund on, say, the police department? And just for the sake of grasping the effect of what you're doing there, because I know that if you, like you just mentioned with the community center, you could stop, well, you still have the basic maintenance of the building, but you could basically shut down the whole facility, and the only impact it's going to have is actually relatively small, $350,000.
Right, savings.
What would be the case with the rest of Parks, Parks and Rec, excuse me?
I'm going to take a guess, and then John can correct me if I'm wrong, and I thought we, wasn't there a $1 million budgeted for the privatization?
I believe so. We'll get it, but I believe that's.
Okay, because I mean, I'm sure the assumption is that the amount, that cost to run that department is less with fewer people than it is with more people.
Councilman Flying?
Actually, I have to say, I'm encouraged by the way this meeting started, with the three gentlemen that got up and spoke, and you're already having discussions about concessions, because that's the first major step in the right direction. Because if 70% of our cost in the city, or if a $62 million budget, 71% payroll, that's where we would need to start. And the fact that you're already coming to the table, and you're having those discussions, like we said last meeting, speaks volumes to this community, because we have some of the best employees, I think, in the state and the country, really. The best police department, fire department, good public works department, we have to maintain our police-fire roads. That's safety, we have to maintain that. The other things are quality of life. I don't want to give up on anything. I don't want to give up on the museum, the library, the aquatic center, the civic center, but we're going to have to take some cuts and modify somewhere, but I don't think the answers close anything. The answer is, start exactly what you're doing, and that's seek concessions, and really talk seriously with every employee, and every union, every group representative, and that's what you're doing, because that's where we're really going to get the cuts up top, and really sets the stage for what this community is going to be able to do, and I think what the taxpayers might be willing to do down the road. But, until we can see that, and see what that number really is, and understand, it's really hard to predict what else we're going to need to do, but I think we have to be doing everything at one time. We can't do one piece, then another, then another. It's all simultaneous, it's working in conjunction with every department, with every budget, but primarily right now, focusing as soon as we can on seeing what concessions we can get. But I'm encouraged, the fact that you just step up to the mic and said, "We're already doing it." Okay. How much is that? I don't know. I know that 10%, it's a big number, but 10% would be $4 million-plus dollars of this problem, of this $6 million problem. And that would be laying nobody off, and that's what you would get. And that would go along, and then what else can we do? Right now, I think that that's encouraging to me, to see that, but we have to maintain this safe city. If we lose that, a gentleman stepped up last week and talked about branding, talked about branding of the city. We've been branded as the safest city in Michigan, one of the safest cities in the country. We can market that, and then we need to keep that and maintain that, and we absolutely have to. If we lose that, you know, we lose really something that, it's harder, you'll never get it back.
Understood. I've been, again, I've met a couple times now with the labor unions, and always, using the interest-based approach, we always try to be specific. And I was asked specifically what I'm looking for, and we spoke about a 5% wage decrease. And that equates to more than 5% when you look at some of the accrual benefits that are based on that 5%, so it could be between $2 and $3 million.
$3 million.
Mr. Zerlik, I, there may be other questions from council on other parts of this, but I think with, given the information of the workforce reduction resulting from privatization, regionalization, and elimination, and those numbers are so staggering.
Yes.
We need to be looking at, so that everyone will have all the options available in their thinking process, even with that occurring, about what it would take to restore, you headed in Option C last week, about restoring public safety services and fully restore quality of life services to the community, so that what it would take to maintain police and fire departments at the current level of service, public works, 24-hour response protocol for snow and ice removal, and if the people in this community so desire to keep the full-service community center, museum, nature center, or library, or any of those, part of those options, what that would take to do, and what it would mean in actual dollars to an individual homeowner, so that as they wrap their mind around all of this, they could see, even with a reduction in wage concessions, that are reasonable, and through all those other venues that we're taking, what it would take, because I can't truly believe in my heart that people in this community want us to just fold up and go back to being a township. I really don't. I don't see it. So if you could explain that, please.
I'd be happy to. That essentially was part of the presentation from last week, and last, part of last week's presentation, Tony, I'm going to skip over you if you don't mind, for a moment, essentially was three options. We were asked what it would take to maintain police and fire departments at the current level of service, and a public works 24-hour response protocol, and that would be a one-mill operating levy. Now, that does it. And again, there'd still be privatization and elimination of all the other departments, including the public works.
Right.
And layoffs. Also asked what it would take to maintain, again, what I would call public safety, a 24-hour response protocol, a full-service community center, and a part-time museum, nature center, and library, and that was a mill and a half operating levy. And then Option C was a fully restored public safety services, as well as quality of life services, but again, all the departments that were slated for elimination, or privatization, or regionalization, for this to work, we still have to realize those savings, and still reduce the workforce by the number that I had mentioned earlier in my presentation for all of the departments.
And you had another slide here in, but you're mentioning, you're not mentioning two mills here, you're mentioning 1.9 mills or less?
Yes, that can be explained more eloquently by Mrs. Bart Thalberg. This is her part of the presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to go ahead and tell, yes, Councilwoman Beltrami?
I have been trying for three weeks to wrap my arms around these numbers, and I guess, as I look at the whole, and the whole that will be somewhere between 5 and 10% of the general fund over the next years, that's the amount we have to cut. And 5%, if our unions give us wage concessions of 5%, that brings us at about 3.8% of that 5 to 10% cut that needs to be made. I guess I am more than troubled, because I cannot wrap my arms around how laying off 47% of our staff is necessary to fill the other 6.2% of that gap. I can't wrap my arms around that, so please, continue to elucidate till I get it.
Sure. It's a five-year projection, okay? It's $22 million that we're projecting, that's a loss. It's one out of three employees that would be laid off across the board, if you will, assuming our revenue line is accurate, and expenditures go up 2% a year. I think, and I'm going to ask Mary, Mary, do you have the, I'd like to show the slide that has essentially the cost of government by department.
I have it. I've been looking at it.
If I can put it for the audience, if I can show that slide, Mary, that would be great. Please don't add a.
Yeah. I don't get it.
Okay. We'll go from left to right. Police department costs $25.2 million, okay? A 10% reduction is $2.5 million for the police department. $2.5 million is probably between 20 and 30 positions, okay? If I may. We could say, well, how about a 10% reduction in salary and wages instead? And the union could say, how about we go to Act 312, our administration? Okay, so I couldn't, can't guarantee that's going to happen between now and December. I think 5% might be realistic, but that's 5%, that's $1 million, one-year only, okay? Parks and Rec being privatized, again, if you save 40% through privatization, you're saving $3.2 million on Parks and Recreation. That's a lot more than 10%.
Excuse me, did you clarify something?
Sure.
Go back to the 25.25%, and you said that's only good for one year? Go back to the 25.2, 5 percent, and you said that's only good for one year. You get that one year, you don't get the increase the next year. You still have that decrease the second year.
I have a flat... It's not a decrease essentially, it's a flat, it's a flat line.
It's flat, you know.
It's a flat line.
But it doesn't go back up, it's flat lined.
It's flat lined, right. So the next year then would be 44 million. And I'd be 1 million toward the 22 million that I'm short, 5 percent in the police department, okay? Parks and Rec would save 40 percent, which is more than 10. Streets and Drains would save 40 percent, which is more than 10. Fire Department, I think we're laying off, or there'd be through attrition, a loss of three people, right? 10 percent there is $400,000. Wouldn't want to look there, quite frankly, because of the service that we get with the full-timers. The library and museum was expunged essentially, that's $4 million. I think what you have to look at is the entire five-year gap that we have, and have that accumulated. I asked John what it would cost only on employee concessions to take care of our deficit, and I forgot what the number was, but...
Or five, we'll just say...
A while back, I had asked if we only took employee concessions and tried to balance the budget that way, what would we have to reduce? The number, it was...
Over 50 percent.
Yeah, that was over 50 percent.
Over 50 percent.
But that's basically what you're ending up with.
So 50 percent of the 70 percent.
It's 35 percent. 35 percent of that.
I guess...
Councilwoman Bell, turn me in.
If I may, Mary. My concern still is that it appears that the cuts you're making are pretty much coming within the next 18 months. And that is, appears to be taking the whole 22 out of the first 18 months, and I can't wrap my arms around the fact that that's necessary.
The... Mary, I've got to go back to option one, if you don't mind.
Oh, we're showing each department?
Yes.
No, we're showing it by...
I got it. Like I said, I've studied these numbers for three years, or three weeks now.
Could I just...
Please, John.
What you have to look at, you can't just compare our current year's budget, $62 million, versus the 57.5 million for next year. That's maybe where you're getting your 5 percent number, whatever. What you have to look at basically is, there's a $5 million reduction in our revenues for next year. There's a 2.3 million dollar increase in our expenditures. So you really have over a 10 percent gap to make up the first year. Not five, not around 5 percent, it's like a 10 percent gap the first year between the difference in the loss in revenue and increase in expenditures, it's around 10, over 10 percent gap you have to make up the first year.
I...
And so we come up with a 6.2 million for the first year, unnecessary cuts to balance out that budget.
Which is, you're exactly right, slightly less than 10 percent. But you're looking at 1.6 this year, which is, what, one-sixth? So that's 16 percent or so. You're looking at almost a flat 10 percent in 2011, and you're looking at 6 percent in '12, and 5 percent in '13, and 5 percent in '14. So that's where I am with my between 5 and 10 percent every year. And I agree with Councilman Fleming that some of these cuts will carry over. And I still, when I look at the cuts that you are making, and I understand it's to preserve whatever revenues we have in the three, four, and fifth year, but it does look like we're having a fire sale on personnel in the first 18 months. And that, I don't think, is, like you say, good for the brand, or an easy way to explain this to me or any of our citizens. I, like I say, I don't get it. I really don't. And I don't think I'm stupid.
Mary.
Okay. Yes, Mayor Patelant-Howell, I...
Yeah, I just want to key off on that. And one thing, you said your assumption was how much increase per year in expenditures?
2 percent.
This chart is using 3.8 percent. That's one of my concerns that I have.
2 percent plus $1 million a year, over and above that, for our pension, our increased pension obligation.
But that would be recurring, and this model has it one year, 1 million, 2 million, 3 million. That's what you're saying?
That's what it is.
The amortization would be one a year, that's it. Not one plus one plus one plus one. That's what you have here.
That's what it is. It goes up from... Got the dollar once again? 1.4 million in the current year, 2.4 million 2011, to 3.5 million 2012, to 4.6 million in 2013, and so on.
And the pension fund, how's its performance to date so far?
To date, it's, well, this year it's doing fairly well so far. It's probably, it was up through six months, it was up around 12 percent.
Right, okay. All right, that answers that question. I certainly appreciate that. The other question I had, which might help me too, is what, you know, when... Actually, there was a whole smorgasbord of questions related to this. When you've got one or two people in a department, do you really need to have department heads? The previous city manager proposed four to six super departments.
I would propose to have our department heads stay intact. And it's for the salient reason, especially those areas that are being privatized, that you want to have someone control the private sector firm that is contracted with the city to perform the work. Additionally, there may be a time when a resident calls or comes up to the counter and has certain questions, that you have someone at that level of talent being able to respond.
I guess, that kind of begs the question, please don't take this personally, but wouldn't it make sense to have the whole city run by an outside firm reporting to council, replacing the function of the city manager, and then to have the city attorney's office intact? Because I know some cities do that as well.
Well, that would be up to the governing body to decide what you want to approve for a budget. If you wanted to have a different organization, that would be up to, you know, you may take a charter amendment, because I think a manager has to be an employee of the city. But there could be a model whereby everybody reports to the various people on city council. I think Chicago did that 100 years or so ago, where there were certain, you know, the commissioner of police, the commissioner of fire, commissioner of water and sewer. And those folks hired and fired the appropriate department head, and, you know, then cities took a different turn to be run either by a strong mayor or by the council manager plan. It's just a matter of what kind of organization you want. That's up to, that goes beyond my presentation. I'm just letting you know that there's not enough money to support our organization the way it's currently fashioned.
And please mind you, I'm not advocating for that, but...
Sure.
What, I guess what I'm trying to bring to the table here is that if you eliminate lower-level employees, people that are lower on the command chain, that you're not going to see much savings. If you were, say, for example, just as an example to eliminate a department head or an assistant city manager position, somebody, you know, you're going to see more of a cost reduction. And again, I'm not saying that, I'm not advocating it for sure, but my question to you was, do we need to have all of these departments? And maybe some of them are grouped better and with attrition, when people leave, you don't replace them and you combine functions into service areas. You know, because before, before City Manager Bacon was here, of course, we didn't have community affairs, and we didn't have the real estate and economic development department. And as the city winds down and becomes a developed city and needs more redevelopment, obviously our personnel needs and department needs change. I'm not really, I don't, I'm not even claiming to be qualified to, but I'm looking to you as the city manager to see if maybe, maybe we don't need all of these departments, because it does seem somewhat unwieldy, just as a layman, as a councilman, to have a whole lot of departments with just a handful of people.
Again, what I can do in terms of the, I can do two things. In terms of the departments that are slated to be privatized, the specification can talk about the necessity for a hybrid, if you will, with an in-house staff. And I think an argument could be made for maintaining a department head in those areas. But we'll see what, you know, we'll talk to a consultant, see what they tell us. And again, it just pertains to the level of service that you want. And I know some departments are privatized, top to bottom, and the firm reports to the manager or the assistant manager. Other times, it's privatized in a hybrid fashion, and the firm reports to the department head. It's just a matter of how we want to frame our level of service, what you want and what you want to pay for that. The departments that would be eliminated, you know, assuming our assumptions are correct on the revenue line and expenditures, one, two, three, four, five, there are six department heads right there that would be eliminated.
Would you go back to slide 26, which was up here, and now it's not here? Because it shows about the employees from at full-time and part-time as we go from 2010 over to 2014, 15.
Sure.
I thought that was part of this question, about when the number of employees is decreasing?
Yes, the matrix indicates, starting with 1011, has one from the attorney's office with the associated savings. That's essentially 100 percent savings, goes to community affairs, which essentially is a total one-to-one savings, six people there. Building inspection, although there's a reduction of 17 people there, again, that may be less than that based on the model, but that assumes a 40 percent savings, so it's not one-on-one there. You still have to have the building inspection function. And that would happen regardless of any election for a millage. The 15 people in engineering is the same way. That would be through privatization. That would occur regardless of a decision that the governing body makes or the voters make. Accounting risk management as well would occur. That elimination, regardless of what council does. The five in assessing would occur. Treasury was the happen person. The library is slated for 39 people to essentially make it part-time, part-time library next year. Same with the museum. Real estate development would be essentially expunged. Parks and Rec would start its privatization. Nature Center would start to go part-time. No cuts in police. Two and a half cuts in DPW. No cuts in fire for 2014, 1011. And again, we can calibrate every four months, see where we are.
I think that was coming from Councilwoman Bell's question about employee reductions and when they would occur. So I thought maybe if we went back over slide 26 again, it would be a little bit clearer.
If you took out the library, the museum, and nature center, chances are pretty good that the balance would occur anyway.
Councilman Asbacher.
I shared several of the comments that my colleagues have made about...
I don't, I don't know, everybody can hear you.
Sorry. Let me speak closer. I shared with several of the comments that my colleagues have mentioned about getting a really good understanding of how the numbers stack up. And I think the chart that you, that we looked at, you currently use in the budget, where it's the bars.
Yes, sir.
I was stacking bars and going to the worst year.
You mean the most expensive year?
The worst year, five years out, we only have a 51.5 million dollar revenue stream, and stacking up the critical services.
Could you define this?
I think we defined them a bit last year, and that'd be police, fire, streets and drains, which would be DPW. I believe most of the functions of the clerk are mandated by law. Obviously, we're required by charter to have a city manager and a city attorney, and...
Assessing department.
Assessing, well, assessing, you said, could be outsourced to the county, but we have to collect the money, which is, I believe, finance.
Okay. Are you talking in-house at this point?
In-house, yes.
Okay.
The stuff that, pretty much no matter what, we can't get rid of. And when I stacked all those up, it's hard to see the items like the clerk's office, because the clerk isn't an item that's split out. It's, I believe it's wrapped into general government.
Yes, sir.
But when I stacked them up, I didn't see as big a hole. So I'd like to get the same chart, and I don't know if, it's looking at it like, next year, how's the chart? The year after, how's the chart? And then looking at each of the subsets relative to the personnel hits, and then the other expenses that we're not touching on.
If I may.
The 30 percent.
The option over your right shoulder.
Yes.
With that in a bar chart format, indicating the number of personnel that's left and what the cost is. On a department basis.
But calibrated towards that department's budget. Because, I mean, although we're talking primarily about the 70 percent, which is the people, the 30 percent can't be ignored.
Okay. In other words, like, it goes from one to another? The department goes from this cost to that cost?
Yes.
From two?
Yes. And it seems like you're setting a goal, a budget goal, for each department, whether it be a privatization, where you're going to 40 percent of the previous cost, or we're talking about a 5 percent that the members of the unions were saying that they were open to negotiate and talk. And try and wrap these together so that we can get a more of a grasp on bite-sized pieces almost.
Sure. Can I toss in an intervening variable? There are some departments that are combined, so that if you look at them individually, they may increase, but if you look at the combination, it's an actual decrease. So I'll have to combine those departments. That's happened, I think, in two occasions.
Yeah, I mean, we can add these numbers together pretty well.
But I would show the departments combining them, so that you wouldn't have to have a lot of different parts on the bar chart. You can do that, can't we, John?
And I think that would help all of us that are sitting up here and not seeing the numbers add.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Unless there was a response from, okay. I think that that's interesting. I think, though, something that's softer, Mr. Zerlag, is the if about privatization. I know that you were going to look to a consultant to see the merits of privatizing some different areas. areas. And so those little bar charts aren't really specific. So, for example, the work that DPW does and even the service for others, whether the district or other things that go on there and how that would all play, even though it's on a proposed privatization, as you said, these aren't things, this is still soft because you aren't dead on whether that would in fact be a benefit or whether that, A, how that would impact services and whether it would, how that would play with costs either. So even though these bars may be one thing, we don't know what that other factor is and we don't know it with a certainty.
And it's a good point because you won't even know what it is even with a contract that's inked. Because when you have an on-demand service and we're going to assume that we're going to build 15 houses a year and have X number of electrical inspections a year and, you know, as hopefully times are going to get better, that workload's going to spike up. I mean, any contract we get is going to be on a per whatever, per widget basis. And so we're, and right now, we have a reduced workload in some of our departments and we're going to bid in that respect. But there'll be, hopefully be a time when the widgets are such that we have to, you know, it's going to be more than what we budgeted, especially in those areas where the fee does not cover the entire cost of, of providing that service. And so, yes, you'll never, you will never nail this down. It's something that, you know, again, there was a reduced revenue line that, that was projected. As management, we are inclined to advise of ways to make an expenditure line meet that reduced revenue line so that we have a balanced budget.
And I appreciate that. I appreciate what you're saying, but I think that you're hearing from my colleagues that we're, our feet are to the fire. And so our numbers have to be, whether they're in a bar chart form or whether they're the best effort that we can give. Because we are, in one year, things have changed drastically. Fees you brought up, our anticipated revenue from fees in every single area. So our residents write, write to us. We receive hundreds of emails regarding, well, why don't you raise fees and why don't you make that? However, the anticipated revenue simply didn't show. That's one of the pieces that put us where we are right now. So in looking forward, whether you're taking the Defense Department's four months or one year, our feet are to the fire on how these options work out. So I think that's what we need to the best certainty that we can get. And, and if I can just do the pickle guy. Because we did receive the wonderful email or, or letter from the pickle guy who had a situation with his water. And yet, Food Network was coming. There was a tour coming to his pickle business here and yet he had the ability to call DPW, talk to a real person who said, yes, we can make arrangements. So your water will be on and you can show the bus tour that comes there and the Food Network can be there. And because of that, we will be sending a jar of pickles, which I haven't seen and would like to have a sample.
Because they were going to be turning the water off is the point. And, and he said, please don't turn it off right now because we have this planned and we made that adjustment.
And that's what happens when you have-
Real people.
Real people. And that's my concern. So it's a cute little story, but it goes to my concern when we're talking about privatizing as much as privatizing is mentioned here.
This issue goes down to what kind of community do you want?
Right.
That's what it boils down to. And that's not up to me. I'm just here to give you the numbers.
Right. Councilwoman Beltrame and Councilwoman Fleming?
I have two things and then I think I'm done for tonight anyway. First, I'd like my colleagues to think about, and I don't want to spend down the unrestricted designated fund balance, but I do think that if we are seriously considering having to supplement revenues with a millage increase, we ought to be bringing that down to somewhere near 15% and authorize spending to that level. Everybody else is spending out of their savings account and bringing it down that far won't affect our AAA bond ratings. So I, I would like us to think about that. Secondly, we get executive summaries of the changes that were made to the union contracts as they are renegotiated. The one thing that over the years I do not ever remember seeing is any kind of a clause in how layoffs will be determined. Is there such a clause in the contract?
In everyone, by seniority essentially.
I would like you gentlemen and to discuss with your unions the thought that seniority not be the only consideration in that. And, and I, I'm not disparaging of any staff, senior or younger, but my point is if we are going to have to have a very creative solution to these problems and if we are in a situation where we have one department with one or two people, is seniority the proper way in the best interest of the city to reduce that personnel? Or do we need that younger, creative person who wants to work harder? Or who isn't so invested in the status quo system that they are willing to do things in a different manner? So I would like that at least to be discussed.
Councilwoman Fleming?
Yes. I'd like to go back to something Councilwoman Howard was speaking to Mr. Lamorato about, if I may, and that was the pension fund, so that I've got my head around that again. Because you were throwing some numbers that were accelerating around pretty quickly. And here's what I heard you say, but I probably didn't understand it quite right, Mr. Lamorato. But you basically said the pension fund, we're going to have to add $1 million per year to that to fund the pension balance. So if we're $1 million this year, we're going to be $2 million next year, $3 million next year, $4 million, $5 million. Is that number reflected in the expenditure line?
Yes.
So really what we're saying is this pension fund, because of the investments not being so good and so forth, projected actuarially, that's a huge part of our problem, if I'm understanding that correctly. It, it is a, what am I missing here? Because to me, that, that's exorbitant if by 2013 and '14, we've got of our $55 million in expenditures, $4 million of that is pension. Is that what I'm hearing? That almost 9% of our expenditures are going to be pension-related? That seems exorbitant to me. Am I missing something?
Make-up pension, not new pension.
I know make-up pension.
So-
That's, that is a major portion. The other major portion is a reduction in tax revenue.
Exactly.
Next year, we have almost $4 million right off the bat in less tax revenue. The following year, $3 million. So you have to make, we're balancing to the revenue number.
Exactly.
Revenue is equal expenses. We're balancing each year to the revenue number. Expenditures are cut to get to that new revenue amount. The following year, we take 2% on top of that plus a million for the new pension contribution. And we, that's our new cut number to get to.
Yes.
So pension is a big number. It's a million a year for the next four years, oh, compounded a million a year.
Compounded.
And then the tax revenue is worthless. Six, seven million dollars in the next two years for those in the tax.
But we just study expenditures for a second, Mr. Lamorato. The, the most drastic increase in expenditures that we're seeing over the next four to five years is pension-related. Correct? Because we're going up at $1 million per year, $1 million, $2 million, $3 million, $4 million, $5 million. That's really where a major part of this problem is. We're incurring without doing anything different than what we're doing today. We run the bit, the city just the way we're running today or as close to it as possible can. Our costs are going to increase for pension, $1 million per year. And the time when our revenue is going down, so you've got a compound problem. And that's just based on projections.
Oh, it's with the actuary.
The actuary.
They have to spread a 25% loss over the next five years. And then, and then they factor in. Each year, they'll be factoring in, but if we do X, if we have a great year this year, it may not, maybe $900,000 or whatever. But it's not going to, we have to have, we'll have to have a super year to get it to budge much from that. What other part of the formula is that the, the wage increases that are built in there are 3.5% or so while we're seeing zero basically for most groups. So that should help out a little bit. But even when meeting with the actuaries last month, even with that and even with great return for this year, it'll, it should reduce it a little bit, but it's not going to reduce it a lot.
Councilman Eisbacher?
On the same point, other side of the coin. If, and I don't even want to say this. I really don't want to say this. If before the end of this year, there's another market event and we lose another 25%, then basically our actuarial values all double. I mean, using extremely round numbers.
We're, don't forget, we're taking a fifth of five years or four, five years ago, which there were some good years and then we're taking that, 20% of that each year. It would, it would definitely, if we have one other 25% hit, it would be, it would be major. I'm not sure it'll double.
So we'd be looking, okay, even if it's not a full double, it'd be almost impossible to recover, recover without a monstrous revenue enhancement. Because of the, the promises and commitments we've made for the retirement.
And that's why we went to the defined contribution plan way back at a time where we thought, well, that cost is a little higher, but we knew at one point down the road that a defined benefit plan would be greater than the DC plan of pension extension payroll.
Ken, as Councilwoman Beltrame brought up very nicely about seniority. I know the city has made a commitment to the employees regarding the defined benefit. Anything we can do to mitigate that risk? To convert, if at all possible, a portion of the defined benefit to combine-
Defined contribution.
Because for each of us to say, yeah, we fixed it. We figured out how to make our budget all balanced for the next five years, come to solution, whatever the, the details end up being. And then if there's another market event that's completely out of our control, it's still on the back of the, back of the taxpayers, irrelevant of any other situation, on top of their own personal retirement. The good news is that we're probably the only city around that has all new hires in a defined contribution system. I, I would, I would think you could not find another city or county that has all new hires in that system. Because of labor contracts, I mean, every year you read about arbitration awards and that issue comes up and it's the dice roll at that level.
And also I don't want to forget, I mean, the part you said about partnership. This is not all going to be solved-
Right.
-on the employees.
Needs to be a tripartite agreement to feel between the employees and the council and the residents.
Right. Okay.
If there's no questions, more, if there's no more for me, I'll ask Tony to, to be the closer on this matter. She's there. Okay.
I think instead of taking a formal break, if people need to dash out and dash back, then I think that's the system we'll use. All right. Yes, Ms. Bartholomew?
Mayor and Council, I'd like to take this opportunity now to go over the options about a millage end. Can you hear me?
Put it up, yeah.
A millage end, a potential charter amendment. If the millage was, millage rate was to increase 1.9 mils or less, council can place that 1.9 millage on the ballot with a four city council member affirmative vote. It would not need to be a charter amendment. For a millage rate increase of 1.9001 mils or more, that would necessitate in addition to a millage question or questions, a charter amendment proposal to be placed before the voters on section 9.16 of the city charter. Section 9.16 of the city charter limits the city council's ability to increase the millage to a rate in excess of 10 mils. Currently, we are levering, levering 8.1 mils. So therefore, if the council votes to put the millage questions out there in excess of that 1.9, they also need to put a tie-barred charter amendment out there. The timeline for getting this out before the voters for February 23, 2010 special election is very, very tight. If you go over the 1.9 mils and need a charter amendment, we would have to take that to the Charter Advisory Committee for their review and recommendation to city council. In addition, we would need to get it to the Attorney General's Office for a review and approval, with approval coming from the governor's office and then to the Election Commission. So as you can see, a month would be, a month would be incredibly tight. It would be doable, but it would be very, very tight. So we would ask that the council keep that in mind. And if I have any questions?
Well, it's not a question for you, but it's a question for Mr. Zerlag. What the 1.9 mils would cover? What would that, what would that bring us to? Is that the same as if it were the, the 2 mil in option C that we received last week? Or is it something different?
The, the numbers that we had were independent of any requirements by the, the council or the voters. Just that was, the numbers that we identified in options A, B, and C were independent of what Mrs. Bartholomew has just indicated. So I'd have to go back and see what 1.91 would do.
Okay.
Or 1.90.
The other thing is our millage limit is 10 mils in the charter, but according to Home Rules Act, Home Rule cities can go up to 20 mils. And most cities in the area, we've compared the millage rates over the years because we always have the lowest rate. Most cities are between the 10 and 15 mils, are they? Are there any cities that even levy over more than that? Mr. Lamorato?
I'm sure there's some over that amount, over 10 to 15.
Uh-huh.
There's some. Oak Park, I think, is 23 or 4.
Oh, they are? Okay.
19. Lawson, I think, is 19 or so.
Okay.
There's quite a few.
I think that's also an important factor for educational purposes, that we have had the lowest rate simply if, if the decision is made to ask about an increase and with the decrease in property value for their, their house. So the tax will be going down, you said, by an average of $158 a year. I'd want to know what the dollar factor that would mean to the taxpayer, whether it would be a wash, they spend, play the same rate, or if it would be like $50 more a year. And I think that's the kind of thing people would want to know if we're going to be, you know, on the ballot. But I, I think that the, the point is about what our tax rate is compared to what other cities are doing. And the reason I bring that up is that I think that we're going to hear in the news very soon about other cities and what they're facing because they've had the same things happen with their investments. They've had the same things about cutting revenue sharing and housing values. So, you know, they're already asking for a higher millage. So I think there's going to be more information on that. But I just wanted us all to have that in perspective as we talk about this.
We'll be happy to supply that as well. And a question for the governing body, did you want to meet once a week or did you want to wait until October, what, 19th to meet again on this matter?
wanna wait until October, what, 19th to meet again on this matter?
Um, do you have your, do you all have your calendars with you? I don't know, I don't know what the work schedule is for the other people and if they wanna just, you know, do it and how many can come, as long as we have a quorum, um, I don't know. That, that would put it at?
Madam Mayor.
What day? Oh, excuse me. Okay. Councilwoman Beltrameen?
I think if, if we can get ourselves together to meet next week, we ought to be working as hard as our employees and our citizens are working.
I agree.
And we ought to be here.
Every week.
Madam Mayor.
Uh, Councilwoman Kirwan?
Um, the 12th is a federal holiday. I don't know what impact that has. I just wanna bring it up.
No impact. Oh, not real. Mayor?
Uh, Mayor Potem Horlak?
I, I guess the, the concern that I have is, I mean, do we actually wanna accomplish something or are we just meeting to, for the sake of meeting? Because this body has a really good history of meeting for the sake of meeting and really nothing else.
Well, to, tonight we had additional information that we did not have last week. And we still haven't heard from people in the audience that wanna speak. These were, some of these questions, the, the answers were given, were generated by questions that came last week.
The problem is that, Mayor, that, that we have, um, very quickly, we're gonna get to a point where we need to make a policy decision and we're pretty close to being there. And, you know, you get to a point where either fish or cupcake, you either do it or you don't. If you don't do it, then what are you gonna do? And if you do do it, how are you gonna do it?
Well, if council's ready to make that decision, fine. You think, you think they're ready to make that decision?
No.
Madam Mayor, it appears that we have one more what. Uh, we had the second what tonight, I think, and then the third what would be part of a presentation perhaps, um, next Monday, the 12th.
The third what is actually your part of the presentation. Uh, you need to get a comfort level with the reduced revenue line and a comfort level with how we outlined expenditures and means to cut them over the next five years. And then once you have that, you have to tell me what you wanna do.
And I think that's what you're saying, Rep. Potem Horlak, is that it's time for city council to say.
It's time for action.
Yeah. And, and I hear what you're saying. I do hear what you're saying. So council, wanna meet on the 21st? I mean, on the 12, on the 12th, excuse me.
Mayor?
Uh, Councilman Eisbacher, was that you?
Thank you, yes. Um, just speaking for myself, I'm, I'm not available that day due to a, a business committee commitment out of, out of the county. I'm gonna be working through the weekend and through that Monday and Tuesday. The, the multitude of options though that we have is what we need to work on narrowing down. There are several items that are outside of our control, which primarily has to do with employee concessions, and I think that's an important part of the, the partnership. We need to get some feedback on what the employees are bringing to the table. We need to decide how we're going to handle our, um, undesignated and our reserve funds and what percentages. I'd like to see the, the bar chart answers in terms of what, basically what the targets are for each department and what we're getting from each department to understand that. And then the impacts that you mentioned.
Someone else?
Mayor?
Yes, uh, Mayor Potem Horlak?
It seems to me too that the, um, the reason for the, um, urgency of this is to get it on the February ballot, and I would have to say, I should say tax increase. A, um, decision needs to be made as to whether or not that's something we buy into, because if it's not, then we need to ascertain if it's May or if it's August. And so one of the things that I, as a councilman, need to know is what is so special about February?
Uh, Mr. Zerlag, would you like to indicate? I can indicate that from what I've ascertained from, from staff is that a February election would allow, uh, the data, the information so that, of what the voters choose, so that when we have the budget, um, projections for the budget which we approve in May of each year, uh, for fiscal year to start July 1st, that we'd have all those numbers in place. Uh, Mr. Zerlag, is that correct?
That's correct, Your Honor. Uh, we start budgets, I think, in January, and the reason for February election would be to decide what revenue line we would utilize.
Mayor?
Uh, Mayor Potem Horlak?
Well, I'm gonna go out on a limb and say right now that I will not support any special elections for a mill levying increase because there's no doubt in my mind that with the undesignated, unreserved funds that we have available to us in addition to the revolving loan fund and Brownfield redevelopment authority, as well as additional set asides and various un, uh, non-essential capital projects, that we will have no difficulty getting through this current year and the next year. What I would like to see as us aim for, regularly scheduled election, which would be in August through November of next year.
Uh, have, have we received the numbers yet, Mr. Zerlag, to indicate that, um, with all those things that were mentioned, that we would still be able to get our budget balanced for next year?
Uh, I've gotta defer to Mr. Lammerato.
Okay. Mr. Lammerato?
Uh, Mayor and City Council, if, if I'm hearing this correctly, that we could utilize fund balance, we could move some capital, millage or whatever over to the general based on those equivalent projects?
Brownfield.
If we get, um, the Brownfield, Brownfield's really gonna have to take care of this year, that we're in current year, but, um, what were the other wage concessions? I'm not sure what else. But right now, we have about 10 and a half million in our unreserved, undesignated fund balance. Now, if you wanted to use 5 million of that and then get another million or so from some other sources, then, you know, it's possible to balance the budget. But I'm not, you know, we have, we're not a resolution that says don't use any fund balance. So if we want to use fund balance on, that that's consensus of council, then combination of things, you could probably make it work for one year.
Last year's, um, budget discussions and we went through all those line by line items and what things we were gonna charge more fees for and everything, and, uh, we talked about, um, using undesignated, unreserved fund balance and stuff. Uh, council was not willing to go below a, a certain rate. I don't know whether they're, they're willing to do that this year. I don't know. I think that has to be determined. And if that's not the case, and also we have to look out for the projections of not only for this year, um, on that, but I think that, uh, we have to decide if we're gonna meet on the, on the 12th or not. If we have some people here, at least we'll have more information and, um, if not, then we go to the 19th.
I can teleconference.
Pardon?
I can teleconference from a hotel room.
Yeah.
Pardon?
I could teleconference from a hotel room on the 12th.
He could teleconference in.
Sorry. Just don't allow him.
Okay.
I'm available.
Uh, Councilwoman Belltrameen?
I'm available.
On the 12th?
12th, 19th, whatever you mean.
Okay.
This is too important, but.
Councilwoman Belltrameen?
I, I think that the Mayor Potem is right, that there are some policy decisions that can be made, but I think that those will take a lot of discussion among ourselves and give and take. It, it, there will be policy shifts and therefore I, I think that we can't do that in this linear fashion.
Right.
We need to be around the table to do that. I'm available.
I would agree wholeheartedly that, uh, for that discussion, that we do need to be at the table where we're sitting all around together, talking about that. Councilwoman Kirwan?
My only question is if, um, this is providing, um, management enough time to pursue some of those things that we talked about. For example, you're going to see consultants about privatization issue and what kind of merit. I know you can make bar charts in time. I'm just wondering some of those other soft issues, which really matter.
Um, you're right, we can make bar charts and we can massage the data to look differently. I'm not gonna get better than a letter that you have, um, in your, than the memorandum that you have in your handouts that indicates that you could probably save 40% through privatization for engineering and, uh, building, building inspections. You're not gonna get better than that by next week. You're not gonna get better than that by probably the end of the year. The, uh, and that as well, if we did have a specification and we had a contract that we inked with someone, it would be based upon the workload and the level of service that we'd have to talk about as well. So I think in the privatization, what you'd have would be about what you'd get, uh, and what you have right now. Having said that, I will ask Carol and John to, uh, essentially do with parts and rec, what I had done with engineering and, uh, building, and then to talk to someone that does privatize that area and see what percentage would be adequate and then massage the numbers accordingly in that regard. And, uh, you know, there were other questions that were asked, we'll make sure that we have answers to them. The hardest one was to try to pin down the privatization number. I believe, I think you had to go with what's close. Uh, you know, I think General Patton said a good plan today beats a perfect plan tomorrow. All you're gonna get is about, is good in that respect. It'll be a good plan.
And Councilwoman Kirwan?
There has been a suggestion, it was made, um, last week, made again to, tonight, or last time we met, again tonight, which was to take some of that additional money and simply use it all the way through the year. To postpone any election or considering of an election until, and I'm wondering what the implications of that would be in terms of lending and in, and, and sound practices and so on, on taking that and pouring it in on an if then.
I believe there's a protocol to use about, or to have about 17% of your fund balance, uh, in relation to the general fund, and there's, there's reasons for that. I think it's three months of services so that you could, uh, essentially survive, uh, catastrophe, whether it's economic or a natural disaster. And that's a protocol that, um, that's established. It's up to the governing body, how they wish to, uh, utilize that, uh, that fund balance. The file analysis, it's up to you folks to tell us how you wanna use it.
But that sound practices, general practices?
Yes.
Mayor?
Uh, Councilman Eisbacher?
Um, the proposal that I believe Councilwoman Beltrameen put on the table was 15%. Um, I have consensus with that. I don't know if my colleagues do. But, um, the reason why I've been concerned in the past about us using our fund balance and why we made, I made the resolution last year was because I had concerns that this would happen. Saw this happen in the savings and loan crisis. Property values dove. And I, I wanna maintain the fund balance to preserve the operations in emergency, not just because it's sacred.
I think Mrs. Beltrameen indicated 15%.
Mm-hmm. We have consensus. Well, that's what she indicated, but we, we didn't have, uh, figures to go with it, so. Okay, um, so we're gonna meet, uh, again on the 12th, correct?
Do you like?
Is that the consensus of council? You can't meet, uh, Councilman Horlak, Mayor Potem Horlak?
The, the point I was making is that the reason why we're talking about meeting more frequently is because there's a push to have a February election. My concern with the February election is that A, people aren't used to it, B, it's in, in the middle of winter, and C, we were talking about only having maybe six polling locations. All of those things concern me greatly. I think it's inevitable that there's going to be an election for this at some time. The question is, do you wanna make it inconvenient or convenient for the voters?
Okay, um.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Eisbacher?
On that, that exact same subject, um, I also think that although we're saying that people's taxes are gonna go down, until people see it and internalize it, they're not necessarily going to believe it. So if we put our eggs in the basket of February and it's rejected, does that mean automatically you wanna ask again in August and ignore the answer from February? Or would you like people to see that their taxes have gone down, their property tax, the amount, not the rate, the amount has gone down, and lay out this case that's been presented? We would also have any potential employee concessions as part of the partnership? And we wouldn't be expending the cost of the election, which is another employee's A year's worth of their job.
Okay. Uh, Councilwoman Kirwan?
Just 'cause that's all to, uh, good to mull over. I am aware that we still have people who haven't spoken, and maybe when we meet on Monday, we can go down that path and.
Mm-hmm, right. Folks, uh, received cards when they came in, um, even though I, when I say a number, it, it's actually starting at one, but we didn't give card one out. We gave out card number 80. So if you have card number 80, I don't know who that is. Anybody have 80? This is like a thing, 81. Thank you. Mr. Savage?
Evening, Mayor. Members of City Council, I guess I feel a little angry because I'm probably one of the oldest persons in this room, and it's my birthday today. And I was brought up to believe in you should live within your means. Don't buy what you can't afford. Well, I've tried to do that, and I've done it through layoffs, through bank closings and the hard times, and I have lived within my means. But our leaders have not done that. Our political leaders, our business leaders, they have not done that. 10 years ago, when people were being urged to buy free for $400,000 houses that they could not afford, we all knew that the bubble would burst. Now we're all paying for the price for that. Nobody stood up. None of our leaders stood up and said, whoa, we've got to pay the price sometime. And now we're all paying the price, I'm having to pay the price, I live within my means. But our leaders didn't. Okay. I was pleased to see so many people at the, uh, at the meeting last week. I haven't seen so many since the I-75 interchange debate. I attended the meeting, but I figured there was enough speakers without me. I figured there was a lot of emotion and not a whole lot of logic. The city manager had once again staged the meeting to, to suit his own agenda. But what that agenda is, is hard to figure. If it was to get the residents stirred up, he was very successful. But if it was to promote confidence in the city and its government, it was a total failure. Why would a person or a business want to locate in a city that goes from affluent to broke in a few weeks? I believe there was a scare tactic to try to overturn last year's vote of the residents regarding the tax increases. I got another page here. The reason the residents voted overwhelmingly to limit the tax increases was because for years, we have seen that the more tax money governments, and this is governments at all levels, the more money they get, the more they will waste. levels, the more money they get, the more they will waste. There were many conflicting statements made in the report and during meeting. On page 30 of the papers we had last week, paragraph 1, "City Manager Is Seeking Employee A few weeks ago, we were discussing the managers, city manager enumeration of $220,000 a year plus perks. This does not jive very well. The downtown development authority has a deficit of over 1 1/4 million, while at the same time, they raised more than that on Big Beaver and Rochester Road intersection, and that will be of no benefit to the residents whatsoever. It has already been an extreme inconvenience to not only the residents of Troy, but the residents of surrounding districts. I have heard that it has been paid for by state or federal money. That is still tax money, and it is still a waste. I knew the state was going broke, but it, until that meeting, I wasn't aware that the county was going broke, too. The financial collapse came last October. A year before that, a major British bank collapsed, and the country of Iceland went broke because of countrywide mortgage collapse. This has been going on a long...